City of Palakka Commission Meeting, February 14, 2019. At this time, we will have our invocation and also our pledge of allegiance led by Elder Jarvis Wright, pastor of New St. Paul Church of God in Christ in Seville, who also just celebrated his 30th birthday. Will everyone please stand for this time?
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we want to say thank you for this day that you have made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you, God, always for the opportunity just to be in your presence, God, among other loving people. I pray, God, that you would be the honored guest in this meeting. Father, that you would give us understanding, wisdom, and direction. Father, that you would fill our hearts and our minds with wisdom, that every decision that we make may bring glory to your name. Father, we pray for this great city. We pray for God, every citizen that is here. We pray, God, for our great leadership, every commissioner, our mayor. We pray, God, in the name of Jesus, that you would cover us under your blood, God of protection, and we will forever be careful to give you all of the glory, the honor, and the praise, in Jesus' name. And everybody say amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, if you don't mind, we don't normally do birthday shout-outs. Could you just tell us a little bit about some of the special visitors that came to Palakka for your birthday celebration?
Absolutely. Thank you for this time, Mayor. Had an awesome time celebrating our birthday, and we had the privilege and honor of hosting a brother of mine that we just met from South Africa. And so, South Africa was in Palakka, and that was wonderful to see. He was definitely in culture shock, but he said that he loved it. And it was wonderful that our great city was able to give him a key to the city, and so he was very excited about that, once I explained to him what that really meant. And also, we had a great national recording artist, Pastor Marvin Sapp came with us. Never knew this city, didn't even know that the T was silent, but now all of our visitors know. So, thank you again for just allowing us to be in the community and to serve. Thank you for this time.
Thank you.
Moving on, roll conference.
Mayor Terrell Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mary Lawson Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Rufus Borum.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Here.
All members are present in the count of four, and you have a forum.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from the January 24th meeting, our record call meeting, and also the call meeting for January 24th? Motion to approve, both.
Second.
If the motion on the floor is second, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our public recognitions and presentations. This proclamation reads as follows: Whereas it is important to create public awareness of the need to protect the environment and maintain appearance of our communities, and it is the responsibility of every citizen to strive to keep public and private property clean and free of debris, trash, garbage; and whereas springtime marks the beginning of festival season in Palakka and Putnam County, during which time hundreds of thousands of people from all over the world will visit Palakka and Putnam County in order to take part in festivities; and whereas both Keep Putnam Beautiful and Palakka Pride have parted together to promote programs that engage individuals through coordinated efforts to renew neighborhoods and parks, trails, and recreation areas, clean up shorelines and waterways, remove litter and debris, reduce waste and increase recycling, and plant trees, flowers, and community gardens in order to inspire a new generation of community stewards who will take great responsibility for improving their community's environment; and whereas the city of Palakka proudly partners with Palakka Pride and Keep Putnam Beautiful to sponsor Operation Clean Sweep, the bill goes off. Greater Palakka Cleanup and Environmental Cleanup Program during the month of February each year in order to help make our community the prettiest and cleanest it can be. And whereas the city of Palakka wishes to encourage all citizens and property owners within the city in this cleanup effort by declaring an amnesty period for yard trash, large items, and appliance pickup during the month of February each year, and will offer this service free of charge from February 18th through February 28th, 2019. Now, therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palakka, Florida, together with the members of the Palakka City Commission, hereby declare February 2019 as Palakka Pride Operation Clean Sweep, Greater Palakka Cleanup Month in the city of Palakka, and hereby encourage all residents to clean up weeds and litter around their homes and businesses, participate in individual group cleanups, paint-ups, and fix-up programs, volunteer their time to help the neighbors clean up their properties, and to help support organizations, neighborhoods, and individuals in their effort to keep our community clean and well-maintained throughout the year. And with this whereof appearance, I set my hand and cause to be affixed to seal the city of Palakka, Florida, on this 14th day of February of the year, by law, 2019. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This motion on the floor is second.
Present.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And so, Chief, I want to present you with this proclamation. Just have to give us a little information about Palakka Pride.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners. I would like to take a little bit of time and say first thank you to Keep Putnam Beautiful, the commissioners, all of the city employees, the volunteers, the organizations that helped put these events together. Without their assistance, none of this would be possible. I think over the period of time that we've had Palakka Pride, we've collected, I think, over 200 pounds of trash.
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand, sorry. Two hundred thousand, I apologize. That's just a little bit of a difference. Two hundred thousand pounds of trash. And I think we can continue moving on, we continue removing the blight from the city and making the city a much cleaner place and a nicer place to visit. Again, I'd like to thank everybody who assisted in the commission for their support.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. And so, again, yeah, Palakka Pride has been a great initiative for us over the last four years, five years, and what it's allowed us to do is to actually go in to be able to help individual citizens as well as other, as well as other communities within the city by partnering with organizations such as churches, civic organizations, youth groups, sort of the mentoring aspect that goes along with it. And in May, we also do the Great Putnam Cleanup, Clean It Up, Green It Up, which has become a wonderful part, and the school system actually has contests that goes along with that, so that we can encourage our youth to also continually protect the environment. So, if Mr. Griffith is anywhere close.
I think he's at WHR.
Okay. We'll move forward. I'll have him come back and select.
He's coming right now.
I'll have Mr. Griffith give some information as to Operation Clean Sweep and Amnesty Days. Can you just give a quick insight on what the Amnesty Days does?
Yes, sir.
And some direction as to what, give what.
A what can go out? Are you sure you want me to do that?
Tires, but not batteries and paint.
Yeah, and no broken-down cars, obviously. So, you know, this is that one time of year where we're trying to get city cleaned up, private, public property, so we encourage residents and commercial businesses to put out bulk waste and vegetation piles. We will pick it up for free, as long as it's in by the 28th. Is that correct?
Twenty-eighth.
Yes. So, do your part, clean up your property, get it out by the road, and we'll pick it up.
You can't be out before the eighteen.
It could be, yeah. They just need to call in for a pickup. Make sure you call in for a pickup.
So, it's only going to be picked up if it's a caller?
She's going to be called in before the screening.
Yeah.
However, they can put it out before the eighteen.
They can put it out.
But it just has the deadline to call.
To guarantee that it's picked up by March the first, they need to call it in.
Before the last day of the month.
Let's just make sure that we are on the same page, so we tell people that we know that you have to call.
When we've got press release, we will blast it out, yes.
Just to clarify a few things, so no hazardous materials, bulk waste, so that can include construction and demolition debris. Typically, we see tires and things coming out of people's yards. Like I said before, we're not going to pick up an old, broken-down car. We don't have the capability of doing that. If you have any questions, feel free to call the office at 329-0107, and we'll walk you through it. But please do call in your bulk waste pickups. We have to schedule a work order to schedule a pickup.
But if you want to get your old, broken-down car out of the yard, we can help you with some resources to do that. We just won't be the ones picking it up. We just won't be the ones picking it up, but there are other people who will be glad to come and get it.
And you can't, they can't say if it's free.
Will that be free too?
They can't say that, because if it's somebody's.
Yeah, we can't say that, but there are organizations that will come and take those up.
Actually, we make that, no. Commissioner, what we do is we actually put them in contact with the scrapyards, and they know individuals that'll come by and pick up the cars and actually transport them to the scrapyards. We don't do anything but just connect to people. That's all.
If I have a title, they'll get a little bit of money.
Thank you for all of that. Next up, Black History Month. We will do Black History Month proclamations twice. I've got members from the African-American Cultural Arts Council who are here. Commissioner Campbell, if you can join me along with the Cultural Arts Council. Ms. Kathy Wright, President, and also, and founder, Ms. Ruth Benjamin. I'm sure you can join me. Commissioner, I would like to honor a reading proclamation. Whereas Dr. Carter G. Woodson, founder of the Association for Negroes, for the Study of Negro Life and History, initiated Negro History Week in 1826, which grew into Palakka, into Black History Month during the 1970s. And whereas Black History Month is so designated to recognize, honor, and record the historical contributions and achievements made by blacks in the armed forces, architecture, arts, business, civil rights, economics, education, entertainment, exploration, history, law, literature, medicine, music, politics, science, and sports. And whereas February is nationally designated as Black History Month and is annually set aside for all Americans to focus on the significant role of African-Americans have played in our country's history and in shaping our nation and culture. And whereas this Palakka City Commission wishes to maintain and promote harmonious intercultural relations and highlight the rich ethnic and cultural diversity throughout the city of Palakka. And whereas to deem for Black History Month 2019 follows black migrations honors African-Americans in motions as they move from the farm to the cities and from property to national stage in business, politics, literature, and arts. Beginning in the 20th century, South African-Americans migrated from farms to cities and from the South to the Northeast and Midwest, giving rise to growing numbers of black industrial leaders and entrepreneurs. With the emergence of ragtime, blues, jazz, the Harlem Renaissance in New York signaled the blossoming of visual and literacy arts, and literary arts. And African-American performers and musicians immigrated to Paris and other European capitals where American jazz was popular. African-American millennials have reversed the historic trend in recent years, increasing the black population, and Atlanta, Houston, and other southern cities bringing the north-south migration full circle. Now, therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palakka, Florida, together with the members of the Palakka City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim the month of February 2019 as Black History Month in the city of Palakka, and urge all citizens to join the Palakka City Commission in celebrating February as Black History Month each year, and to share in the spirit of the month and take part in related activities that reflect the goals of Black History Month. And with this whereof here, to set my hand and cause to be affixed to seal the city of Palakka, Florida, on this 14th day of February of the year, by law, 2019, Terrell Hill, Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, Tammy McCaskill, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Brown, second, by Commissioner McCaskill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We want to go ahead and present that to the founder. And so, in February, do we have any special events that we need to be made aware of?
Ms. Dukes is having something in Central City on Sunday the 16th at 6 o'clock to honor Putnam County historical.
Okay. Can we get the Commissioner Jones down for this one?
Okay, that's it. We got the memo. Oh, let's get on.
What's that we do? Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. Item two on our agenda is public comment. Anyone is here wishing to speak, please fill out one of the yellow speaker's cards in the back of the room. Mr. Jutris, you can fill it out subsequently and move forward. You can fill it out after you speak for efficiency purposes, and we'll move forward at that time. Anyone else wishing to speak, please fill out a yellow card. You state your name for the record.
Jay Almond Jutris, 14th Mohawk Park in Palakka.
Yes, sir.
What I want to do is commend all of the commissioners and you, the mayor, as well, for stepping forward and really supporting this Bass Masters program, and also the, telling them about the Blue Craft Festival, getting it back on track. I think they're really things that label the community. I had some guests in last weekend, and they were here, they were just going to be topping through on Saturday. They happen to be bass fishermen, they loved the bass program that was going on. They loved that all the people that were out there that were really supporting it. They said, "This is just amazing that they came back on Sunday for the next go-round of it." They were so pleased and thrilled about it. But you guys are the guys that put it on the map, and we have to keep doing this with Palakka all the way around, and somehow, we've got to take a look at what, you know, like the Blue Craft Festival, in order to go on, you have so many fees and stuff with the application to be able to put on an event that is beneficial to the community. And those fees, if there's some way that we could do some adjustments or make it more favorable to be able to put on even a small event. I know that the Main Street program went down by the boards, but even now, like they had the dessert thing on Saturday night, but had it in the shops so that they wouldn't have to pay the fee to have that as an open event. So, somehow, I don't know what the answer is, all I'm just saying, it would be nice to be able to put on more events and keep the community going the way it's going. But again, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jutris, and if you kind of stick around through the consent agenda, you'll hear more conversation about some of the programs that we have, the grant programs we have to aid with the public events as well. While we're on the topic of Blue Craft and Bass Master Elite, I think kudos goes out to Jonathan Griffith, Mandy Tucker, the Public Works Department, the Fire Department, the Police Department, for the job that you guys did as it relates to this question. Just the amount of, just the amount of availability, and also, Chief as well, and both chiefs, just being able to adjust and accommodate Bass Master as they're here. Had an opportunity to talk to the CEO and the Vice President, who both indicated, "Hey, we can't wait until the next time," which is always a great sign for this community. We're one of the only communities in the country to host this event three times, and they rave about the fact that Palakka is the most accommodating and has this thing down to a T. And I think the adjustments that were made, that were voted upon by the commission to cover, to go ahead and put river retention in on the riverfront, as well as the move of the clock tower, were instrumental in us getting the bid back for Bass Master Elite. It couldn't have been done without the work of Dana Jones and the Chamber of Commerce and all the things that they've done, and the volunteers that were there at 5:00 in the morning daily to make sure that all those, that all those boats and trailers were parked and the boaters and the anglers were actually transported. And so, those things were critical to what we had in place. Comcast coming out and helping us out with the hookup of the internet, and it was just wonderful. We got roughly about $2.5 million that went back into this economy. You had boaters who fished and pre-fished about a week prior to come to here and stay in for an additional five days. And so, all those things were great for this community, and the exposure on ESPN for two weeks is second to none. And so, we're excited about what's in place with that, and I think it was just a job well done. And everyone that I talked to had nothing but great things to say about the folks in Palakka, the record crowd that was there. They said it's one of the largest events that they've had for Way In under the Elite Series. But also, they love the setup of the riverfront, and they love the way that we responded to their needs and made sure everything was in place. And they liked the new layout of the riverfront because it allowed their major vendors to be side-by-side at the Way In for the first time since they've been in Palakka. And so, it's just a job well done overall. The vision and the commitment between the commission staff and the chamber to put this on, as well as the county commissioners that were present, is just what Palakka and Putnam County needs to show and welcome visitors into this community. And, you know, I was absolutely proud of the way our community responded to Bass Master Elite being here. And it didn't hurt that the win in Angler called over 30 pounds of bass on the last day to come back and win. And so, they said it's almost unheard of for individuals to catch, you know, almost 100 pounds in a four-day event. And so, we're just, we're just glad that we're, we continue to be the bass capital of the world. So, we're going to move forward into item three on the agenda, which is our consent agenda. And just for the record, item C has been pulled, and that change order will come back to us at a later date after it's been amended. Are there any other items on the consent agenda that you wish to have pulled at this time?
We have a question about it.
And E.
I make a motion that we approve the items excluding E and F for discussion.
Second.
This is the most on the floor, second, ready for the discussion.
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item E, adopt resolution number 2019-R20, accepting a proposal for trade-in on the current fleet of golf carts and documents associated with a 55-month lease agreement to effectuate the transaction.
I just want to pull that for a vote, I mean, on the carts.
So, this is the same that you pulled the last time. The problem with the resolution was that the number on the resolution did not match the leasing number because it did not include the balloon payment that's at the end. So, we never, well, let me tell you the number. At the end of your lease, if you decide to keep the carts instead of trade them in on the replacement cycle that they present to us, which is what we have always done historically, is just trade them in, you don't pay the balloon payment. But if you keep them, you pay that payment. So, I didn't include the balloon payment on the resolution because it's been historical that we just move right on through it. However, the resolution and the lease documents did not align whenever we looked at them to submit them to Easy Go, and so, we just need to make sure that those numbers. But nothing else changed. It just includes that balloon payment.
The 237, the 277, or whatever, the 64.
Correct. It says 60. If you decide to keep those golf carts at the end, their five-year life cycle is up, you still pay that $60,000 to keep them. So, it's just advantageous to the city to continue on.
We just haven't paid it because we keep trading them in.
We've never paid it because we keep trading them in because of their life cycle.
And just as a point of information on golf carts, at the Bass Master Tournament, there's typically like four carts that are brought in for the tournament. There are like 12 carts brought in annually for the tournament. About four of them broke down, and so, they had to be replaced.
And they use them for the airport, you know, so they're being used. Andy's very good at letting us use them throughout the city.
Using for the big festivals.
They had problems, they had problems with the flying as well.
Yeah. I mean, they're used every day on the golf course, so apparently, five years is their life cycle.
Yeah.
Just a question would be like the warranty on them, the warranty on them.
Just wear and tear.
Because I'm thinking about, you know, based on the cost of each one of them, you can buy one a month. I mean, but I was just thinking about the warranty. When you look at the cost of each of the golf carts, you can buy one a month and still be within the same cost structure. But, I don't know.
Any more questions as it relates to item E?
We just.
Any further discussion? Seeing a question, this question's called by Commissioner Borum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. No, may.
Oppose. Vote passes four to one. Moving on to item F, adopt resolution number 2019-R20, the CRA tip special events cost share program. Vice Mayor Brown, consider, you have a question.
One of our citizens asked how we're going to do oversight to make sure that when we give them the grant funds, that they do what they're supposed to do and the golf cart's supposed to go.
You got it.
Somebody can answer that for us.
Yes, Commissioner, it is a cost-share program, so we're still going to require the same backup documentation that we would require for any other cost share slash grant, you know, proof of payment. This program does require a detailed budget, which shows where the CRA funds are spent in relation to the entire event budget. So, just like we do with the TIP-HIP, just like we do with the improvement fund, a voting improvement grant, a PSAG grant, prior to payment, and even if there is a loan, we're going to require the backup documentation.
Any other questions?
No, I'm making a motion to accept.
There's a motion to approve, and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item four, request for support until the house renovates as Palakka Art League. Is there anyone here from the Palakka Art League?
I can give you a little history about the house if you want me to.
All right, well, I want to just, I want to just the history on the support request. If there's no one here, I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion to take this up, to move forward.
I make a motion to table this item.
Second.
Definitely?
Yes, until the time we need, necessary.
Motion on the floor, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, public hearings. Item five, resolution authorizing the city to engage with Inspire Technologies, allowing for execution of contract agreement that addresses IT solutions, of which include recurring management aspect as well as a project plan for network and computer upgrades.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Palakka, Florida, accepting a proposal from Inspire Technologies and Information Technologies IT Company, and authorizing the mayor and/or city manager and city clerk to execute and attest a managed services contract agreement and all related necessary documents with Inspire Technologies.
So, move.
Okay. So, that makes sense. Our guru is still listening, still paying.
There's a motion on the floor, and a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing note one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Just by discussion purposes, I want, guess Becker to talk a little bit about the monthly fee and what if I could have him come over to the chair and stand, if you can come forward.
Good evening. So, in front of you, I've distributed our budget report. It shows what our budget is currently, actual as they are, a column for projected, with the monthly rate for the managed services, and then a potential budget. So, I'm going to kind of take a step back and say that through discussions with Inspire Technologies, and we have had discussions with Commissioner Borum, who was appointed as the IT guru of the city.
Well, I want to say that.
And the mayor. The initial contract was presented to you as $15,750 a month recurring expenses. Inspired has worked with us, and we are down to $11,000 a month, which is what this contract is for. That is a total of $132,000 annually. If you look at the budget that I gave you, you can see that the budget in 2017, 18, with your personnel included, or your operating and your capital outlay, was $215,000. We did cut. We did cut the budget significantly this fiscal year to down. And then, I'm saying projected with this one hundred and thirty-two will be one forty-seven. That does exclude any purchases, so software, hardware, equipment, operating supplies, that sort of thing. So, but if you look down at the bottom left-hand corner, this is a contract comparison, just kind of a little note that I put. Inspire Technology is for labor only, but they will be providing us with a field technician, a network engineer, supervisor, project manager, CIO. So, we're gonna be able to do everything from picture computer, have a help desk, look at some of our wiring if we need be, and then help on more of the management side and supervisor, project planning, five-year scope, budgeting, help. That's one thirty-two thousand, or a hundred and thirty-two thousand. You see underneath there, one full-time employee for fifty-seven thousand with the maximum benefits that the city would offer, and one full-time employee at twenty-three thousand, which is roughly around our eleven dollar minimum with maximum benefits, it's a hundred and forty-five thousand. So, you can see the comparison that if we decided to hire somebody at fifty-seven thousand and then a, you know, a technician maybe possibly at eleven dollars an hour, what you would be looking at. So, with that, let's see, one thing I wanted to kind of drive home with this is that they are truly our managed services. Therefore, they're going to help us project plan, they're gonna help us with, you know, like I said, five-year planning, what do we need? However, the city still has the ability, or still is in control, if you will, of our purchasing. So, we still have to follow our procurement policies. If Inspire comes to us and we look, we sit down, they sit down with all of the employees, they run their technology on the computers and they say, we have ten people that just need their basic computer, that's four hundred, three hundred, I don't even know. And then, we have a couple of heavy users that need an eight hundred dollar computer, you know, and they give us all these specs. It is up to us to then go to state contracting or out for bid, or however, it is up to the city to decide how we procure those computers. Therefore, they are there as a liaison, as a partner, they are truly our employees at this point after we sign this contract. So, it's more of a partnership. And I don't think that would really explain whenever the quote was given to us, it was kind of a little scary, you know, you sign your name and this is what we have. They're gonna come in and do some analytics, they're gonna sit, talk with all of us and kind of give us an option A, B, or C. We can go leasing, you know, and that's when we get down to the nitty-gritty, but we cannot sit down and project plan without this contract in place with them.
But the contract is continued upon us, putting certain improvements in place?
Correct, so the contract is continued, there are some contingencies, which are things that we have already discussed and all agreed upon as far as the police department being one of the main reasons why we need this, you know, bring them up into compliance, make sure that they stay in compliance. In order for them to manage our services, or manage our IT, we have to make sure that we get ourselves as a city up to a certain point. So, we will have to have expenditures such as new servers, we will have to buy new computer PCs and things. So, by signing this, we're saying, yes, we are gonna move forward with making these improvements and upgrades, we're just gonna make sure that we have a hand in telling you where, what we're comfortable with and what we're not comfortable with. However, there are contingencies, we do have to, with any managed IT services that comes in, they will, they will not come in the way that it is right now. So, they are actually in the back. If you have any questions, we have Jeff in the room also, if you have any questions.
And just so that we're on track, the start date, the commencement date of the contract has not been totally agreed upon at this point.
Correct, we are all talking about March one commencement, that's what.
And so that we're, and just so that we're also announced, there's been a few meetings that have taken place with Inspire, but also with Mr. Grooms, who's currently our contracting IT with us at this time. And it seemed to me that the consensus was that the city would be in a better position financially to actually go out for bid for the services to both to pull wire, to pull cable for fiber, for example, and to put the, to pull the additional internet wire if necessary, that if we're gonna use CAT five or CAT six or whatever it may be, as well as to look at more, better cost savings as it relates to purchasing equipment. And we saw cost savings as much as six thousand dollars as related to some of the service that were in place.
Correct. And that will be something that we'll sit down and again, project plan, and they will be able to show us our options. If you go with this option, the pros and cons, if you go with this option, pros and cons. So, we will be bringing back, you know, solicitations, bids, RFP, state contracts, prices, every piece of this, of the step-by-step, but the city is the head of all of the decisions.
And then, we still have resources available in our, in our budget and what particular fund that will allow us to be able to purchase hardware necessary.
One-time non-recurring expenditures, we will be able to. And that's why you can see down to the right, it does not include budget, or the line item to red and not include budget for these items, but they could potentially be purchased with non-recurring funds.
And phased in if you so desire by the commissioner.
Correct, absolutely.
Any other questions from Mr. Trump, what do you have?
I just wanted to say that this hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year for Inspire Technologies is a bargain. I have been monitoring what's going on on the court's website and there have been discussions with cities, you know, around three thousand to twenty thousand, you know, what's your IT department, how many employees have you got, what are their salary ranges, job descriptions, and are you considering going to a managed services type of contract? And this fifty-seven thousand annual salary wouldn't touch. And the minimum two employees, some cities have three, and that twenty-three thousand wouldn't touch the, you know, the assistant to the IT manager. So, that's a bargain.
That's bare bones, yeah, the two positions. And another thing that I'll say is what is advantageous to the city is that the fact that they are already working with the sheriff's office, therefore, they have a close relationship with the software that is already in place that the police department is using. And they are also, you saw at the last commission meeting, that the gas authority has also been in discussion with them. And I'll tell you, because we are in audit mode, heavily working with the gas authority this year, as it being our first fiscal year completely separated, we are in dire need of making sure that we have the ability to communicate back and forth with them, so.
And that's been a complaint.
Yeah.
And so, again, we appreciate Inspire for working with the city as it relates to this contract, but also Mr. Grooms for stepping up and helping us come up with some solutions as well. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner's board?
No, I'm pretty good with it, especially after we had that last meeting or whatever, I'm good with that. It provides us with business continuity and that's what we're looking for. We can't just have a person who we hire in, one person who really is not around seven, I mean, twenty-four by seven, and you can wire anybody out. So, they provide, yeah, they provide bodies and they have the knowledge and expertise in various areas. So, I certainly appreciate it again. I thank Mr. Grooms for what he has done for us and, so that's pretty much all I had. I think we're heading in the right direction.
Anyone else? Chief, you have anything?
Not yet, sir.
And so, also, just to kind of let you know, we had a pretty extensive conversation as it relates to compliance for you on your end, Mr. Grooms' information, I think is extremely helpful to us as well as information that we got from Inspire, to kind of move forward at this point. And those are things that led us to where we are. We were talking about coming back to the commission with additional options. I think the option at this point, the most viable option based upon what we got from the contractor, the vendor, as well as from our in-house IT and the police department along with staff and management, was that we're in a much better situation to use our resources, to use our contracting power as a governmental entity to try to get better numbers than what we were getting. Inspire really is not in the business of doing the, of putting the hardware and stuff in place, but they will contract if it's something that's necessary to move their partners forward. And they've actually given us some guidance as to what specifications they want in place to move forward, and that's where we are. Any other comments or questions? Thank you again.
Thank Ms. Becker for all the hard work that she has done as well.
No idea.
And city manager Betsy, what she has done as well, so.
We appreciate you as well, Commissioner's board.
Thank you, sir.
Any, if there's no more questions at this time, we will open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing note one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to number six, ordinance, public hearing on transmit of draft ordinance for large-scale future land use map amendment for eleven point one acres located in the northeast of Comfort and Crystal Road to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity and other state agencies for viewing, first reading. Good to see you, Mr. Townsend.
An ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, from RM residential medium density to REC recreation for twenty-six parcels located north and east of the intersection of Comfort Road and Crystal Cove Road located in section thirty-seven, township nine south, range twenty-six east, providing per separability and providing an effective date.
So move. Second.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner McCaskill, a second, by Mr. Brown. Mr. Lockman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is our last deja vu item. This item was actually before you, on October twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen, you adopted this request for a land use change along with the planning and development zoning on the property. The planning and development zoning is in place, however, the land use at the time, you were under a year process with the state and that had not been completed, that had been completed in twenty eighteen. And so, now, as a matter of procedure, we are going back to redo this land use change. Unlike the other ones we've seen recently, this is a large scale, it's more than ten acres, it's an eleven point one acre site. And so, instead of having a one-step adoption, we have a transmittal hearing tonight to DEO for review. Typically, DEO review is thirty to sixty days. It'll be back to you probably two months or so for the final adoption hearing, if you transmit it tonight.
Any questions from the commission?
Question.
Does the transmittal does not encompass, so the next phase will encompass the modifications that were made previously?
No, the, this only, we're only looking at the land use designation.
And so.
The zoning stands.
The zoning stands, and so, we're just doing it, so we're just doing a transmittal?
Yes, we're doing a transmittal, and the only thing we'll do with the next step would be an adoption, and that would enable the applicant to be consistent with both the comp's plan and with the zoning to go forward with the project.
And so, the only thing that's really changed is just to, it goes from a small scale to a large scale?
Yes.
We're now open for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing note one, we will close public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission?
Question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Lockman. Moving on, ordinance amending appendix A fee schedule to add fire inspection fees, second reading.
An ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida, amending appendix A fee schedule of the municipal code of the city of Palatka as it pertains to fees and other charges relating to chapter thirty-four, fire prevention and protection, providing per separability and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing note one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on, updating the agenda update on city manager selection. Ms. Robinson here?
Good evening.
Several Robinson. Due to some scheduling conflicts this week with the parties that are involved with narrowing the candidates down, we have a date set for Tuesday at one thirty for all of us to get together to narrow down the semi-finalists.
How many do we have?
Ten, was it eight to ten?
We ended with twenty-one, we're trying to get it down to ten.
Oh.
And all of us need to meet for you to get it down to ten?
That will be.
The committee.
Yes. The committee, I mean.
Yes, correct.
Well, certainly appreciated, thanks for the update.
And after we reduce the candidates down to ten, what are our next steps in the process, just so that everyone will be advised, fully in the TV land?
We may present them to the commission as we're doing a workshop. In order to do that, and then you guys will have the ability to narrow them down to five.
Do we have a date for the workshop?
The date for the workshop, I wanna say it was March second, if I'm not mistaken.
Is it a workshop or a meeting?
Oh, that's your thing. It's that Monday, I'm sorry, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, I'm sorry. It's that Monday.
On March fourth.
Is it a workshop or a meeting? Could be a workshop.
They can't take action at a workshop.
Okay.
So, it's gonna have to be a meeting.
Yes, thank you.
March fourth. So, March fourth.
Just verify that again, what's taking place on March fourth?
March fourth, we're having a meeting to accept the ten finalists and determine who will be interviewed, how many will be interviewed for the ten finalists.
And so, and someone will come up with the following steps after that meeting, correct? Or is that already thought out and planned out?
The committee is gonna meet.
Correct.
My question is.
I know where you're coming from.
Is it the steps after we have the fourth, do we already know what the steps or the timeframe is after? The reason I'm asking is because the month of March is very much, I'm out of town traveling for work, so I want to make sure that we can plan.
So, on that date, I guess we can kind of, kind of agree schedules so that we make sure that everybody will be available for that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So, February twenty-sixth, the committee meets, March fourth, we meet, and know about when the next day is.
Can we send out some proposed dates so we can tell them the schedule?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Is this incubator discussion?
That'll be me.
Mr. Man.
I would like to put it back on our radar, we had it as our full priority about three or four years ago when we set our priorities. I had been talking to Father Bob March with the Episcopal Church because the one in Jacksonville, Reaver Street project was helped along and ushered along by Episcopal Diocese. And they were at one time interested in helping us to get started. We have a building sitting across the street that has, keep putting a beautiful in storage, and there are grants that we can get from Department of Agriculture and Department of Commerce, one or two, to help us put a business incubator together. And I would like for us to put it on our commission meeting for discussion and give you all some time to think about it so we can start. We have a lot of young people that want to start their own businesses, but don't have the wherewithal to do it. And if they start them, then they hire others, and I'd like to see us get that started. I don't know what's in the plans, well, the annex over there, but it's been sitting up there for a while.
So, I guess my question would be, are we discussing that or?
Yes, sir, there's a agenda for discussion, yes, sir.
I guess my question would be, are we looking for a place more than just to house individuals? Because. Because isn't that what the Small Development Council, Business Development Council assists with as far as the startup of businesses? Are we looking to, what, what are we actually looking forward to do?
We had, we had Jackie come over from the business incubator. It, it, it housed businesses, some that they had to walk, take their hands, walk step by step, and help them get all that paperwork done. It's a lot of folks that can do the basic work or whatever it is for a business, but all the other stuff that goes along with it, how to pay the bills on time, how to get banks where they underwrite and loan us and get payback, how to maturely pay, uh, workforce unemployment. So it's, it's like, um, it teaches not only how to start, but how to keep your business going and how to hire people.
That's what the small.
But they do not do that.
Well, the difference between what, and actually they do do the portion of it, what they're doing is virtual incubation based upon what they, what they're seeing, that the services are that they're supplying, but not to the totality that you get. One of the first business incubators that I saw was CFCDC, which is Central Florida Community Development Center in Daytona, and it still exists to this day. And I remember years ago, I introduced Vice Mayor Brown to Gerald Chester, probably fifteen years ago when this thing was already in its infancy. And the difference between the business incubators, if you remember the tour to Beaver Street when we first came on the commission.
Right.
Business incubators actually house an office in that assists with tax preparation. They actually may provide reception services, and they also provide a rent structure that kind of phases the individuals down. So the rent is subsidized, for lack of any other term, and then the idea of the business incubator is, is to grow the business, to give them all of the tools in order to run a business by providing training, providing resources, providing other things in place. Not necessarily hold handholding, but if you need to speak with someone for tax as it relates to preparation of taxes or bookkeeping and things of that nature, you've got all those people who are there with expertise in place inside the incubator. There are services that are provided, but once that business continues on, and within a two-year period or so, two to three-year period, the plan, the hope is that the business will outgrow the incubator and move out into its own, and a new business move in. And so, it's a development, it's a business development tool that's become very popular nationally. And I think the difference between what you get when you're talking to Ms. Lynch or some other folks is you actually have a physical site which may have warehousing or garage space on one side for people who are maybe doing auto mechanic work or some other type of service, and then you also have office space available, and it allows people to be able to come in with their businesses and get the critical, and get the critical help, because where the businesses fail is on the record-keeping side, not necessarily on their craft, but it's the other aspects of it, and so that's, that's kind of the difference.
On the business side of it.
And with Ms. Lynch, I, I, her boss, what's the other lady that comes here?
Honesty.
All right, she, I talked with her because I asked them, because they do a business incubator for her. They said that they, with the grant they have, they could not do it, but they could help do some of the technical stuff that we need to get done. It, it is providing a space, but it is also, people don't want to raise it, a little handholding from the beginning. It's just a help to get folks to understand what they need to do and train them how to do it. And if we, we, we may never get a Mercedes Benz here that employs a lot of people, but if we do business incubators, we get a lot of small businesses. We had that. When I was a child, Eleven Street had their own business, they had cleaners, they had barber shops, they had pool rooms, they had garages. People were, were there and they just did it by the skin of their teeth. Things have changed a little bit now, and with all the stuff government makes folks do to qualify, we had a simulated business incubator one time. I sent them to New Development Council and Department of Agriculture, I asked for, I asked for help, and they sent five people in here. They said, do you have anybody who would be able to clean up buildings if you took them back? Like farmer's home buildings, clean yards, clean paint fix, just do the stuff that they needed. And we said, probably, because the housing authority was doing that kind of job for themselves. They were training people, were in there, people who lived there, how to go in, and as people moved out, they fixed the buildings back, cleaned them up, did the stuff they needed to do. They sent somebody in here that taught them how to write a contract, get a government contract, to do those buildings, yards, and whatever they needed to do when they cleaned up. What happened was, they did fine for two years because the housing authority got nothing, ushered them through it. The person that had the yard service, nobody told him, he had a contract, he could have gone to a bank, played part of his contract and got new equipment, his equipment got so bad, he couldn't keep up with the work. The ladies that had the cleaning service that worked really well, the lady lost out because she, she couldn't keep up with her unemployment tax and other stuff. So it's the thing of getting that system of training people on how to do it. We have folks that say they're interested in helping us. We looked at maybe getting a board of business people together. I talked to Mr. Beck and Ms. Wood. Yeah, we got it, it's there.
Sloan. Sloan.
And they were interested in seeing because they said they could train people to start and even help in working in their own businesses. So it's like an, an intern program for folks.
So, so Vice Mayor, you're taking the lead on this, that's what you're saying?
Well, I want to know what y'all want me to do.
You want me to take the lead on it? You seem like you've already started assembling the team.
Well, I've been, I've been talking about this since nineteen eighty-five, when I first saw the first one, I went and visited one in Miami. I've been to the one that they told me to the one that's back for this. And I just have not been able to get the group sitting up here with me to understand that if we teach people how to, the fish is still giving them fish, they can feed themselves.
For a lifetime.
That's it. And so, that, that is something I think that this commission would be good to leave behind for other, other people. We had a bunch of small businesses before integration, uh, people who just saved up, worked hard, and they did really well, but they didn't have the government to contend with. And, and some of that stuff, you need a hand, a guiding hand. Banks don't want to loan a lot of young people money, but somebody got to take a chance. And so we need to, to see, it brings the banking, uh, families in and, and helps them to show what they need to do.
Okay, so for our next steps, would you be able to, uh, bring in a concrete plan as it relates, or at least have someone, just let me finish. Have someone come in to speak specifically as it relates to business incubators? Give us some idea as to what facilities we have available in this community that would be viable? What's the cost associated, and what other funding sources are available for us to, to actually put together the business incubator? If you could get those things set up, either workshop on this issue, then we can start to have some true conversations about it.
Hey, I've, I've been talking to Father Marsh, and he said the Episcopal Diocese, it's been a while, I'll have to reconnect with him. I'll see how much information I can find and bring back to the group and see where we need to go from there, if you all want me to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm getting, I'm too old to do a lot of work, and y'all ain't gonna do it.
Let's consider this your last project, then.
No, this ain't gonna be my last project.
I'm saying your last project is your major project, but since you got a lot more room to go, let's keep rolling.
We gonna be rolling and rolling.
Hang on, let's, let's make it happen.
Y'all ready to get ready? I may can't do it as fast, but I'm gonna get it done.
Well, we appreciate your energy, and we appreciate your zeal, and we're gonna look forward to having that presentation come back to us. And we can set it up, uh.
Don't give me a deadline yet, maybe.
No, no, we'll let you coordinate it, and you can work with it, and I'm sure you got some team members out there that'll help you out as well. So, uh, we'll kind of make it happen, and we'll do everything we can to put it in perspective.
Thank you. That's all I need here.
Thank you very much, and business incubators are definitely critical. Business development's critical to what we're doing, as well as workforce development, enough the conversation we had last on Monday. Moving on to our city manager and administrative reports. Mr. Griffin.
Real quickly, we had an onsite meeting with Klein Construction regarding the progress on the North Third Street sanitary sewer project. We did convey our displeasure with lack of progress over the past few months. They did agree to a very specific schedule over the next three to four weeks. We will be distributing that to the residents, so they can continue to see progress on the project. For the past two days, they have met the milestones that they committed to, we'll continue to monitor that. We did meet with DOT in reference to the State Road Twenty project today. Their representatives being Stephen Spittleover Construction, their two engineers, as well as subcontractor and contractor. They're moving forward with the utility work, they will be distributing a schedule to the city so that we can get that out to the residents. Very excited to see that project happening. Is there anything else I can provide you a report on?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thanks for, thanks for moving in alone.
Great job on the Bassmasters.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I saw him working while he was out at the restaurant.
It was very noticeable, the way that they were able to lay everything out, with the things, with everything being moved around, they had a ton more room. Public appreciated it.
He worked through his lunch, too.
Worked through his lunch?
Yeah.
Joined the club.
Yeah, I saw you at Corky Bell's over there working. He, he, he got a call while he was at lunch. He couldn't deny that one.
Ms. Robinson?
As I'm a part of several different organizations throughout the community, this Sunday, Bee Gees and Just Bike Row Network will be sponsoring a lupus benefit motorcycle ride right here in the city of Palatka. Will start at the airport, um, we will make our way through interlock and we'll end up at the riverfront. So, everybody who's ready to come out, lunch will be served, and you go, a bunch of bikers come.
About how many you expect to come?
Eighty to a hundred.
Wow.
What's the date of that?
That's amazing.
It's seventeen, February seventeen.
Alright.
Do you get to turn the wheels off your bike first?
What time, what time, what time?
Kickstands are up, which is what we say, we move.
Kickstands are up?
Kickstands are up at ten-thirty from the airport.
Ten-thirty?
And you expect the bacteria what time?
About eleven forty-five, twelve o'clock.
Alright.
You, uh, expect the back.
I can't, I can't, I swear he can ride now, I just.
Yeah, what time? Eleven forty-five? So, are you, oh, am I kicking up?
No, they gonna start out at the airport.
Yeah, eleven forty. Okay, kickstands will be down here.
Eleven forty-five.
Okay, alright. And make sure you don't ride with your kickstand.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, ma'am, I've got some thank yous I need to pass out, we recently had a little event out at the airport you probably know about. First, I'd like to thank the advisory boards for making us have it even though we were scared to death of it. And for the volunteer day work they do the day of and leading up to it. I'd like to thank the city for allowing us to use the facility to showcase the airport to aviators throughout northeast Florida, and for all the support we got from the various departments. Thank, thank Jonathan and Sean Mann for all the work that you did.
Thank my staff.
And your staff, and your staff for putting in call-ins over the last minute, and give us a couple of workers to help with the maintenance that day and the cleanup. And probably you did lead up to it, thank you, your staff, outstanding. For the police, the fire department, your president, President's keeping the peace and passing out bandings if necessary, thank you very much, cheers. And the commissioners and the mayor, thank you for coming out and recognizing Mr. Jeff Hapford and all his men to this event throughout the years, that was, that was a real, real special moment, and I take it whole lot with him, thank you, sir.
Well deserved, well deserved.
A lot of teamwork from a lot of organizations, if you saw the art, in the newspaper, as many as I can. Missed one, I know of probably more, but the American Legion, they've been out every year, and every year they, they transport seniors and veterans and handicapped people to and from the parking lot in these, uh.
Golf carts.
Yeah. We get for them, they do an outstanding job, and I apologize, Mr. Dan, I wonder if you're out there, thank you very much.
I saw the Ride Solutions bus making loops, bringing people in.
And Betsy, thank you for your support and encouragement throughout this thing.
Come on, Mr. Yu.
And Logan Becker processing all of the purchase order requests that are wanting to, I don't know how your staff does it. It was awesome. The newspaper, your coverage on, and they're advertising, and radio stations for their advertising. And, and for the record, it was the newspaper and radio's fault that caused that parking problem out there.
It's one shot, y'all, look.
It's got the list.
It's coming to.
And of course, all of the sponsors that you saw on the advertising banners, without them, this thing just couldn't happen. And the support of the city, I just can't thank everybody, anybody in this room, we're gonna, uh, grow this thing. One thing, uh, two other things, we did scan two inspections.
Oh, you forgot.
He does a lot of right on his heart.
So did you know?
Do I have music?
Forgot to like Police Department and Water Management.
No, I said, thanks for, to the Police Department and, uh.
He was waiting.
Water management. You're right, it's a good water management.
I just flew your leg. Anybody else got anything else, sir?
Two things, uh, business, the Florida Department of Transportation recently came out and inspected our airfield again. Once a year they have to come out, we are a licensed facility, and we did pass our inspection for another year. And we also had our fuel provider come out last week and looked at our fuel operation, and we passed that with light colors as well. And that's it. Thank you, happy Valentine's Day.
Mr. Lockman?
Happy Valentine's Day.
I appreciate the support. Chief Brown.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Hello, Ms. Becker.
Oh, wow. I'll save it for try to beat Mr. Yu, wasn't I? I'll save it for next week.
Yes, I do. Uh, Chief.
My job.
This one, he got a wife to go home to, too.
Yes, I do, and I wanted to say thank you for putting me in the doghouse tonight for Valentine's Day. I will put out solicitations for couches, because I might be on one of them. I just had, I had two things for Ms. Robinson, I will not be participating in that motorcycle ride, those.
For good reasons.
For good reasons. I'm trying to keep my safety, then. The other thing I have is, I regret to inform you that we have canceled the Chiefs' Gala. I'm sorry, that is correct, Commissioner, it is not canceled, we have postponed the Chiefs' Gala.
Okay.
So the Chiefs' Gala, we're gonna be coming back to you with a, later on, with a scheduled date, later in the winter, we'll be encouraged. Again, I'm going to be soliciting, soliciting your support in the event, and I look forward to all of you guys being there. Um, we are, we ran into some unseen circumstances, and I think this is gonna try not to be a bigger and better event anyway, so, again, just wanted to say thank you, and if anybody can help me out with that couch, I would look forward to it.
Chief, can you tell us why you're not participating in the bike ride?
Uh, well, I would, but my kickstand wouldn't go down.
Oh, I really don't have anything. I mean, you're asking again.
Ms. Tucker or Mr. Griffin?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Anything, some public works?
I thought you already did it.
Mr. Holmes?
Very briefly, you asked me to report back on the name, availability of name for the Bluegrass Festival, based upon the patent and. Based upon the patent and trademark registry search that we performed, it appears that one entity in South Carolina has the names of Blue Crab Festival and World Famous Blue Crab Festival trademark. But no search for Palaka, I mean, no, no conflicts for Palaka Blue Crab Festival or Blue Crab Festival of Palaka or Blue Crab Festival of Plutnam County or Plutnam County Blue Crab Festival. I think you're, you're okay if you, as long as you don't use the term Blue Crab Festival with no, no other adjective and as long as you don't use the term World Famous Blue Crab Festival.
Any comments on the commission?
Sure that, Mr. Griffith?
Thank you for the awesome job, sir, for your research.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That was pretty quick.
That should be a glance I need to find.
While they're talking. I just want to, just briefly if I can. I want us to take this as a, can we take this name as an emergency item to direct council to secure those, secure those names?
For the city of Palaka?
Yes.
We have the city of Palaka?
Yes.
And you want Palaka Blue Crab Fest, what, what name?
What would the two names say? You say work.
The only two we can't work with are World Famous Blue Crab Festival or just Blue Crab Festival.
The last one.
Palaka, Palaka Blue Crab Festival.
Oh, okay.
No, we would be, I would do Palaka, nobody knows who Jim's.
Can we do, can we do Palaka Blue Crab Festival?
Palaka Blue Crab.
Emergency item, I, I'm in motion.
We'll make a motion to accept this as an emergency item and I'll also make a motion.
Second.
Second.
On the floor, a second?
Question.
Oh, oh, I'm pretty serious.
I also make the motion that we have counsel looking to patenting the name or what, what's the proper word?
Trademark.
Trademarking the name Palaka Blue Crab Festival for the city of Palaka.
Actually, we could do the trademark too if we can get a little logo or something.
Can we do trademark and, can we, can we take action to tra, with your motion? Does that motion include trademark and copyright?
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor of trademark and copyright Palaka Blue Crab Festival.
In a second.
Is there, is a second on the floor? Question's been called off. Any further discussion before questions?
Mr. Campbell, Commissioner Campbell, you'll trust whatever trademark I come up with?
That's not like a river, that's like an ocean.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Oppose much care to them, Mr. Smith. Uh, Mr. Campbell, your comments.
I just wanted to give a quick shout out to Rock HR as well as everyone who helped. We did a career fair at Jenkins Middle School about two Fridays ago and we rocked it. The kids were definitely amazed. We had our commission meeting planned and there was one specific kid who asked legit questions about what was going on here in the city of Palaka. So we do have a following of kids that actually look at our meetings on YouTube. His name is Mr. Session, he's an eighth grade student at Jenkins Middle School and he worked, he asked questions about the city manager. He asked about some of the projects that we had going on. And when I talked to his mom, she said he really does follow us. So definitely kudos for them asking us to come out and definitely kudos to the kids that follow us on YouTube and watch our meetings.
It'd be nice to have some of the kids come to the meetings too.
I told them that I'm gonna start asking them to come out.
Great.
Ms. Grant Brown?
I, I want to say that Black History is just not about learning about our ancestors and people go. It's about making Black History. And I would like to commend this commission on all the work you all have done during the time we have been here to make Palaka the best that it can be. We don't always, people don't always think about it, but I want to remind young people that they need to talk and look at what they are doing that might be something that will be history in years to come. And I think some of you all have been doing things that will be in the history books from young. My second thing is that on the third Tuesday, which is next Tuesday, at five fifteen, I would like to call to arm every woman that would like to learn more about us in Palaka and government and government in general. We have so many people who have never been in this room and they're beginning to ask me questions about it. And I would like to have all the women that we have that are interested to come that evening to see if we can get a group together and educate them on what government is about. I'm gonna ask the newspapers guy in bed seat to put it in the newspapers so Tammy can get away and join us that day. We won't have any problems with it.
Yeah, where's the meeting and what time?
Oh, it'll be here in, in this room. I want them to come to this room. Some of them have never been in this room before and some of them ran for election and had never been in this room before. So we need to have them come in here, see what we doing and how we get it done. I, I've been on the commission for a number of years and I'd like to leave some of the things I, I've worked with and found out over a period of time to help us not only locally but statewide and federally to be better citizens and to make our time the best it can be. That's all, ma'am.
Thank you and again, thank you for your three and a half decades of work for this community and making history as well. So we appreciate all that you do and the wisdom that you impart on us. Ms. Peters.
In the vernacular of the educators, because I know that we have at least three people in the school system here, I distributed this flyer on FBC LEO. Thank you to Commissioner Campbell for narrowing the dates down. So he's my positive reinforcement example. So I just need someone, I just need you guys to narrow the dates down for me and let me know if you're gonna come, because I've already made hotel reservations. I just need to narrow those down. Yeah, so tell me exactly when you're gonna come and when you're gonna go, when you want to check out so I can get that narrowed down.
I just, I just.
I just needed to reserve.
Just scratch it down on the back, put your name and say, I'm fucking in here, leave it there and get it back to me by tomorrow.
I get it to you, the main thing was just to get it reserved.
That's right, well, we got it reserved, but now we just need to pin it down. So happy Valentine's Day to all my Valentines up here and in the audience. Great job to all the departments, make the city shine. Cities look really good for the Bassmaster. Hope we can keep the trend going for the Isaiah. That's it.
Ms. McCaslin.
Just happy Valentine's Day everyone.
From the, from the Valentine. From the Valentine.
Alright, just want to say happy Valentine's Day to everybody in the city, on the board, staff. But more importantly, I'd like to say happy Valentine's birth to my wife today. She's.
What's it called?
Valentine's birth, this is her birthday today. So I'm in here working on her birthday, but.
Chiefs don't have to get a duke out.
You know me with, you know me with chief.
So I did a wordsmith on that one, so.
I got an ancient woman back house.
Alright, well, so yeah, I just wanted to say that to the love of my life and she's twenty-two years married and twenty-five years totally invested. So I just want to say happy, happy Valentine's birth to my wife.
Can we copyright that too?
Yeah, well, hey, that's a new word for me now, not a wordsmith. But that's pretty much all I had around Valentine's. But also like to welcome Inspired on Board for, for working with us. I know I might have seemed a little brash, but again, thank you guys for hanging in there and I thank the commission for putting up with me as well. So other than that, that's all I had. Thank you sir.
Appreciate it. Mark your calendars for the weekend of starting April twenty-fifth to April twenty-eighth. The city of the land will be naming a building after Joyce Cusack, who longtime state representative and also first African-American to serve as the chair of the county council in Belichick County, one of my mentors and also the first chair of Northern elected officials organization that I'm a part of. And so I think it's gonna be a great celebration over there. And so that's gonna be a three-day celebration. Also, just want to thank the residents of Third Street, of North Third Street and also South Ninth Street for their patience in dealing with the repairs and stuff that's going on. I know it's there at a boil. And Mr. Townsend, the, so we are, we are glad that we are in the last month of getting everything done and making it to your, and making it here into the streets so you have a new street to go down after having a year of no street to go down. So we are, we're just glad for the patience and I know it's a frustrating activity. We met with the, we met with them last, two days ago and they gave us a timeline and we should see some progress throughout the remaining days of this week and also as we move forward. And so they've got some metrics they're giving us and we're hoping that it comes to fruition. And so we're just, we're continuing to move forward with that.
True story, there was a lady in City Hall two days ago who said she was glad her street was torn up.
She didn't pick for everybody else.
No, she doesn't.
So with that being said, we will not let her be the spokesperson. And I think she may lose some friends in her neighborhood, but we're gonna go ahead and wish everybody happy Valentine's Day and adjourn this meeting.